All right, we'll call tonight's meeting to order. Thank you to those of you who are joining us via WebEx. Thank you to our invited guests and administrative staff that are joining us in person. May I ask, are we in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes.
Thank you. Will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Nordean.
Here.
Commissioner Zer.
Here.
Commissioner Beka.
Here.
Commissioner Clements.
Here.
Commissioner Harder.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
All right, our next item of business is the pledge allegiance. Tonight's pledge leader is Zoe A. from Putnam Heights. Principal Lesneski writes that Zoe is awesome because she brings a positive energy to our classroom community. Zoe is always willing to include everyone and loves putting smiles on her peers' faces. She continues to challenge herself in academics, social skills, and her character. Zoe is awesome because she is funny and an overall joy to be around. Zoe, we're happy to have you today. If you'd like to come up and lead us in the pledge, those who are willing and able, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we'll move on to the adoption of tonight's agenda. Could I please hear a motion to approve tonight's agenda, to adopt tonight's agenda?
移到 2nd.
Moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next up is our recognitions for the evening, and with that, I will turn it over to Superintendent Johnson.
Evening, Chairman Nordean, board members, student representatives, cabinet.
Yes.
We've got four recognition items tonight, and at the very end, I've got some, I guess we've got four of these to present, so after we're done with all of them, we'll take pictures up front. First off, the Sherman Socktober Service Project. Socks are in high demand for people in need in the community. The Sherman Stars rose to the challenge to collect socks and raise money to buy more socks. Brianna Henry, special education teacher at Sherman, spearheaded this project. Sherman students and staff donated 1,909 pairs of socks and raised enough money to purchase an additional 400 pairs. These will all be donated to local shelters. A big thank you to the students and staff who helped with this project. Secondly, the South Middle School Play. South Middle School recently performed the play Brothers Graham: Out of Order. The students were directed by Shelby Moore and Danielle Stanley, and there were 20 students in the cast and 15 students in the crew. The play was the first one held in several years. The crew made the tower for Rapunzel out of an old shower. Another highlight was Emma Phillips, a South student who provided live accordion music throughout the show. A sincere congratulations to the staff and students who worked so hard to perform the play and share it with the South students and community. DeLong Middle School Service Project. Brent Wathke, DeLong Middle School 7th grade social studies teacher, received a grant from the Eau Claire Public Schools Foundation. He used the grant to purchase lawn rakes and leaf bags so that students could do some community service. And the neighborhoods around DeLong by raking leaves. His students helped multiple families, which was done during a success class that DeLong offers. Thank you to Mr. Wathke and his students for assisting DeLong neighbors in need. And finally, Putnam Heights School Opens Food Pantry. Erin Anderson, the partnership coordinator, had spearheaded the creation of the Putnam Heights Food Pantry in cooperation with Feed My People Food Bank. The school will be able to offer food items to better benefit an entire family either weekly or just for an occasional meal. Families will be able to request and order their items directly from Putnam. This is an amazing service, and we thank Ms. Anderson for taking the initiative to establish this important service to help families. Thanks again, and we'll take some pictures now up in front if those folks are here. For Sherman students and staff first.
I'm from South.
All right. We'll now move on to tonight's public forum. The public forum is a chance for members of the community to address the board. The board provides each speaker up to four minutes to address the board. School board will not hear complaints of school personnel nor any person connected with the school system in a public forum. Tonight's first speaker is Lucinda Kemet.
Lucinda, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
You can now, welcome.
Oh, good. Okay, perfect. I couldn't, I wasn't getting response from you before, so should I start?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. My name is Lucinda Kemet, E4715, Queens Drive, Aliva, mom of four, I have a bachelor's of science in chemical engineering from Purdue and an MBA from UC Boulder. I am speaking to you guys tonight to request that you ask for proof that the procedures you are using for contact tracing and quarantine are working. All good science contains the opportunity for evaluation and revision. I recognize you are following EC Health Department guidelines. However, we elected you guys to provide a safe education for our kids. When healthy kids are required to miss several weeks of school, it strips them of their opportunity for an education. Nobody, none of us question that kids need to be in school. Attendance has always been a key factor in the success of an educational system. Each week this year, we have had 550 to 800 kids in quarantine and an average of about 50 positive COVID cases. Did the quarantined kids test positive later? Ask for evidence from the Health Department that quarantining healthy kids is keeping active COVID cases out of the schools. Because these policies have significant negative consequences, the burden of proof needs to be placed with the people in enforcing the procedures. So I see it as your role to ask the Health Department to provide you with proof that these things are working. Second of all, locally, it seems as if many COVID exposures are coming from vaccinated individuals who don't have to quarantine and are not following the CDC recommendations for additional testing. I ask you to find out just how common this is. As I'm sure you are aware, numerous studies are referenced by the CDC, the FDA, published from major universities and entire countries of data, have demonstrated that vaccinated people transmit disease and often carry similar viral loads as unvaccinated people. I will be submitting an open records request to determine how big of an issue this seems to be in our district. My point is, if the goal is to reduce COVID transmission, shouldn't we be treating vaccinated people the same as unvaccinated people? Kids are being harmed by being denied an education because we are not controlling COVID as much as we could be in our schools. It is vital that we understand these important questions, and the Health Department can give you those answers. With my remaining time, I will share some data. Thanks to my education, I'm a critical thinker. I have taken statistics for each degree and use it daily in my job. I read science reports in my job, and I have been studying vaccines since 2009, so I have some context to aid my understanding. According to the FDA, for every 10,000 boys who get the vaccine, 1.8 will develop a heart condition. According to the Wisconsin DHS, for every 10,000 kids under 15 in Wisconsin, less than one was hospitalized for COVID in the past month. If we vaccinate 10,000 kids this month, they are two times more likely to develop a heart condition from the vaccine than they are to be hospitalized from COVID. Those who want the vaccine's protection against severe illness are eligible to get it, and that is fantastic. I am super grateful for this technology. But the school system should not be offering incentives to coerce kids or adults to get vaccinated. This decision is a personal decision between the child, their parent, and their doctors. If you want to understand where I got these numbers, I would love to sit down with you and walk through it with you. Finally, a plug for rapid testing. Rapid tests are used throughout the region and country to allow people to get back to normal activities. I am vaccinated. My two boys are not. For $24, I bought two rapid tests at Walgreens Saturday morning. We took the test so the three of us could see elf Saturday night. If rapid tests make live theater safer, why can we not use them to keep kids in school and reduce the amount of time that healthy kids have to stay home? In summary, please ask more questions. Ask for proof from the Health Department that what we are doing is effective and working. Look for a better way. Our kids are all counting on you. Thank you very much for your time and for listening to me.
Thank you. Our next speaker tonight is Diane Peterson.
Diane, you're unmuted.
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. I'm Diane Peterson. I am a senior citizen, so obviously I don't have children or even grandchildren in Eau Claire School District, but my tax dollars do go to support the school district, obviously. Somebody on a fixed income, I have some questions about the proposed COVID policy, giving 10 days of paid leave to people who are vaccinated or whose children are vaccinated and need to quarantine. First off, where is this money coming from? You're proposing to do a referendum in a year. We're still paying off the last referendum. Is this really the best use of this money to give people an extra 10 days off? I mean, it sounds nice, but is it the best use of the money? Secondly, in regard to this proposed policy, I'm concerned for the staff morale. How are staff reacting when employers, employees are treated differently based on their vaccination status? Are those who are not vaccinated feeling scapegoated? Are they feeling left out? There are legitimate reasons for people to choose not to be vaccinated, including religious or medical reasons, or the fact that they've had COVID and have natural immunity. There are also over 100 different, 100 openings in the school district, according to a recent news report. You've had to increase subpay to try and get people to work. So are all of these things maybe connected, that people don't like this COVID policy of treating people differently? I don't know, just asking the question. My third point is that I do believe that the policy as proposed is discriminatory, obviously discriminating against people who are not vaccinated. I also believe that is highly coercive and punitive against people who choose not to be vaccinated or who don't vaccinate their children. The policy as proposed ignores the real science of natural immunity, saying that only vaccinations that produce immunity are acceptable. It ignores the religious or medical objections people have to the vaccines, and it does ignore the fact, as the previous speaker mentioned, that vaccinated people do test positive, do get sick, and can spread COVID. So please, I ask, do not vote yes to this policy the way it is, or even at all. At a minimum, please amend the policy before you accept it so that there is no distinction between vaccinated and unvaccinated people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker tonight is Nicole Iverson.
Nicole, a request for unmute has been sent to your computer, and you're unmuted.
Can you hear me?
We can. Welcome.
Hi. So this is just going to be quick because what Lucinda said, amazing. I really wish we, as a community, could work together as far as what is best for all of us, not just, you know, your way, by way, his way, her way, whatever it may be, and work together and really hear all the different resources. I feel like our community is really dividing. So with what Lucinda said and the last gal that just spoke, I completely agree with a lot of what was said. We really need to take a look at it from many different perspectives and work together. I was reading the company, or not company, but the board manual and information, and one of the things it said is being non-biased and listening to the parents of a stakeholder, and I just don't feel like we're quite, quite there. So my first question would be, when are we going to go back to in-person meeting? I wasn't at the meeting where there was some turmoil, but I feel like turmoil doesn't necessarily mean a bad thing. It just means that we're passionate and you have people that want to be involved, and I think that's important to remember that. As far as the quarantine paid leave, again, the discrimination is very clear. Not everyone can even get the vaccine, so whether you're for or against it, doesn't matter. I think we need to support and take care of our staff members because we are so short-staffed already, and we really need to give them, you know, the support that they need. And that is all I have. I really wish you guys would take, revisit the mask mandate and the mask in all the facilities. I also wish you would look at the mental health and what it's doing to our children, but also when kids are quarantined, how we are supporting them and helping them get back on track. I think education is the number one issue, and I think we should be focused on that. At this time, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker tonight is Don Leuck.
Don, you're unmuted.
Can you hear me?
You're very quiet, Don.
Okay, is that any better?
Just a little bit.
Well, if you can hear me, I, the first three speakers actually took all of my thoughts, and I would just ditto everything they say, particularly that it's very discriminatory thing at the COVID pay for just the vax and if their children are vaccinated. Like they said, there's many reasons to choose not to, and I just don't, should be a fair justification. That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Not certain if our next speaker is on the call, so Marissa, I will turn it over to you to check right away, but our next speaker is Lori Plackey-Worth.
Thanks, President Nordean. Call-in user, you've been requested to unmute. Call-in user, are you Lori Plackey-Worth and wish to speak? I don't think Lori's here.
Okay, thank you, Marissa.
You're welcome.
That concludes our public forum for the evening. We will now move on to our reports. Before I send it to Commissioner Lyons, I have a brief announcement about to do as an informal president's report. With the annual school board election period for nominations beginning in December, the board will be holding two in-person information sessions planned for the public in the boardroom at 500 Main. They will be held Thursday, November 18th at 7:30 a.m. and Monday, November 29th at 7:00 p.m. The information presented, which will be identical at both sessions, will focus on roles and responsibilities of a school board member, the board's governance structure, and election information. Pockets with all necessary election materials will be available for participants. For more information, please see the ECASD webpage at ECASD.us. Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to the Budget Development Committee and Commissioner Lyons.
Thank you. Budget development met on November 11th. There were two items on the agenda. The first agenda item was an overview of the five-year capital plan. That plan is on tonight's agenda. It's item nine for board consideration. Second item was a review of the referendum timeline. We identified that we're slightly behind schedule on that timeline and that it should be presented to the board, that timeline, that was presented to the board in late summer, early fall. An updated timeline will be developed for future board consideration. We decided to meet again this Thursday in an effort to keep moving that forward. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. We'll now move on to our legislative update, and Dr. Johnson.
The following bills were passed and signed by the Governor. Senate Bill 373, now 2021 Wisconsin Act 89, requires the Department of Public Instruction to create an online portal that displays financial data collected from all school districts, county children with disabilities, education boards, and independent charter schools. Senate Bill 555, now 2021 Wisconsin Act 90, adds required content to school district curriculum on human growth and development regarding the Safe Haven Law. Every school board provides a human growth and development instructional program. A similar bill, 220, now 2021 Wisconsin Act 83, requires schools to annually provide information to parents on youth apprenticeships and creates an exception for providing information on options only available to high school students for schools that do not serve high school grades. The following bill was vetoed by the Governor. Senate Bill 454, which would have required a massive overhaul of reading readiness programs, included new mandates relating to screening, assessments, interventions, parental notifications, and reporting requirements for providing no additional resources to implement the mandate. The U.S. Department of Education releases the following new guidance and resource documents. Return to school roadmap, child sign referral eligibility under Part C of the Individuals with Disability Education Act. Return to school roadmap provision of early intervention services for infants and toddlers with disabilities and their families under Part C of IDEA. Supporting child and student social, emotional, behavioral, and mental health, and supporting intersex students, a resource for students, families, and educators. The House of Representatives passed the 1.2 trillion infrastructure bill. Items of interest to K-12 schools in this federal bill include a total of $65 billion for broadband investment to help families access to internet and afford devices not exclusively tied necessarily to schools, $5 billion for clean energy school buses, $500 million over five years for competitive grants to schools and nonprofits for energy efficiency improvements, $200 million over five years to remove rare contamination to school drinking water as part of a much bigger drinking water program, and then reauthorizes and extends until 2023 the Secure Rural Schools and Community Self-Determination Act, which helps fund schools in 700 counties that have federal forest land, including several in the state of Wisconsin. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. This time, we'll move on to the superintendent's consent agenda. The board votes on each of the consent agendas with one vote without discussion. If a board member wishes to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and voted on separately. Tonight's superintendent's consent agenda contains Human Resources Employment Report. At this time, I would hear a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
移到
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And opposed? We'll now move on to the board's consent agenda. Items on the board's consent agenda include minutes of board meeting, November 1st, 2021, American Education Week proclamation, and COVID-19 paid leave days for qualifying staff.
I would like to pull item 7.4, COVID-19 paid leave days for qualifying staff, from the consent agenda.
Okay, we'll discuss that in just a moment. At this time, then, I would hear a motion to approve the board's consent agenda of 7.2 and 7.3. Moved in second. And all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And opposed? We'll now move on to item 7.4, COVID-19 paid leave days for qualifying staff. Commissioner Lyons, I will turn the floor to you to lead your discussion.
So we've all received emails on the COVID leave benefit, and we've heard some calls tonight about it. It extends 10 days of sick leave to vaccinated individuals. So I wanted to reiterate why I feel this benefit is warranted, but I also wanted to offer an amendment for the action item tonight. So to reiterate, the Eau Claire County Health Department recommendations are that close contact or symptomatic individuals must quarantine if they suspect that they have COVID. This is not a choice that our employees can make. They may or may not be sick, but they are required to stay home, per the county recommendations. The COVID leave can only be used for COVID-related absences, and in my mind, this is driven by the county recommendation. The efficacy for vaccines are in the range of 80% to 90% effective. The chances of a vaccinated employee needing additional leave days is substantially lower than the chances of an unvaccinated employee needing the additional days. That's why I draw the distinction between extending the benefit solely to the vaccinated The amendment that I have proposed would be to strike the language, staff members who are fully vaccinated prior to January 3rd, 2022, and had COVID-related absences, which would be eligible for COVID paid leave days, would be eligible for the retroactive payment back to July 1st, 2021. Would replace that language with, quote, "The district will implement the benefit on the basis of vaccination eligibility and/or status that was in effect at the time of the leave request." So simply stated, to qualify for the additional leave days, I believe the employee needs to have been vaccinated in advance of the benefit, not planning on being vaccinated at a future time. If they were not vaccinated, that was a choice that the employee made. Not that, not being vaccinated increases the susceptibility, the contract, contracting the virus, and we shouldn't be covering additional sick days retroactively because of that choice and because the choice led to potential spread. So the difference and the distinction I'm making is that if the employee has chosen to be vaccinated, the leave days are extended to them. If they took days off because of COVID and are thinking about being vaccinated in the future, I do not believe that those days should be extended for them.
So Commissioner Lyons, I need to have you motion to amend the COVID leave policy, and you can, you can simply say, as shown here on the board. Board members, you can see the proposed amendment that Mr. Lyons is suggesting, will be suggesting in a moment, as you consider it for a second and then for, of course, discussion afterwards. So if you have a motion.
I would motion to amend that the district will implement the benefit on the basis of the vaccine eligibility slash status that was in effect at the time of the leave request.
We have a motion for amendment. Is there a second? At this time, then, we'll open the floor to discussion on the motion. Dr. Beka and then Dr. Johnson.
Go ahead.
Okay, Dr. Johnson. So, so as a point of clarification, the amendment that's proposed potentially eliminates the perception and/or intention of incentivizing employees from getting the vaccination. Is that, is I, am I understanding that particular, particular point?
That's one thing that it does do. Yes. Thank you.
Dr. Beka.
I'd like to hear from Superintendent Johnson or HR Director Marks, if, if anything like this had been considered during the discussion or the development, or anything similar to this, or what could be advantages or disadvantages from a human resources perspective.
Lieutenant Johnson or Director Marks.
So the updated option B that Commissioner Lyons has asked to be modified, the reason that that was put into place between the last board meeting and this board meeting isn't for the purpose that Commissioner Lyons is indicating where an employee would be like, well, I'm going to risk between now and then and take my chance. and take my chances that perhaps I'm going to have to quarantine, or I might have a positive case, and then if that happens, at that point in time, I'll get vaccinated, and then I can retroactively go ahead and get those days covered." What the updated option B is intended to do is to say, based on the fact that the school board is considering COVID paid leave benefit at this point in time, if I'm somebody who, to this point in time, hasn't been vaccinated, but based on what the board is choosing to do at this point in time, I'm now going to say, "Okay, I'm going to get vaccinated," based on the decision that's before the board. That decision to vaccinate, based on the decision in front of the board right now, can't happen overnight. The days for... If that were me, if I weren't fully vaccinated, but based on what decisions before the board, I was somebody who's going to say, "Okay, now because there's a benefit for COVID leave days, I want to get vaccinated." The time it is going to take for me to become fully vaccinated is going to take multiple days. Commissioner... I'm sorry, Commissioner... Executive Director Kohler, how many days was that? Thirty-six. And that's assuming that we could get in within the next, I think we averaged two weeks, maybe? So if I got in within the next two weeks to start my first dose, it would take 36 days from the first dose to the end to become fully vaccinated. So the idea was, if the board made the decision tonight to say yes to the COVID paid leave days, and I was an employee who hadn't been vaccinated, but based on your decision to provide this benefit, I decided to become vaccinated, it would take those 36 days to become fully vaccinated. So that's how it got to be, January 3rd. And then I would be in the same vote as everybody else who, prior to tonight's decision, couldn't have their retroactive days covered between July 1 and tonight. So that's the premise between what you heard November 1st and what you see before you tonight, was based upon, if I'm somebody who hadn't been vaccinated, the board chooses to make this decision, and I say, "Yes, I want to be vaccinated," the length of time it takes me to get to that is that lengthy process. So if I'm somebody who jumped on board now and said, "Yes, I want to do that," the timeline for that to happen, if I'm somebody who did it right away, would take me to that point in time. And so we're saying, if you're somebody who jumped on board right away and said, "Yes, I'm serious about doing this," that's how we got to that point, because we're trying to eliminate exactly what Commissioner Lyons was talking about. Somebody kind of went, "Well, we'll kind of see what happens." And some of the ways until later then get things. Oh, well, went, "Okay, well, now maybe other ones can get vaccinated." And by then, they've become infected, and then, you know, wound up taking out some students in the process, and that's what we're trying to avoid with that process and the updated recommendation that you saw before you. So does that help, Commissioner Bika?
Thank you.
I'll step in here real quick, Dr. Johnson, and then I'll come back to you, if that's all right. So I certainly support this overall policy in giving our vaccinated staff. I don't support this amendment. I'll vote no on it. Because I look at people who have had that COVID leave, and while I wish every one of our staff members would have taken the opportunity that they've had now for months to get vaccinated, in a sense, any damage that has been done from contracting that and having to be out in potential, you know, contact with other staff members or students, I'm willing to, in a sense, let that go if it means that our staff are going to get vaccinated in the next few weeks and make our schools one step safer. You know, Commissioner Lyons, I agree with you completely, you know, the 80% to 90% efficacy of the vaccine, and especially now as our staff members are able to get booster shots and keep that high. Our staff getting vaccinated is the best way that we can keep our next semester even safer. And so I see it in some way, taking that and giving that retroactive back. If that's the thing that pushes a staff member over, that didn't know at the beginning of the year what's the cost-benefit analysis for my hesitancy on the vaccine, it may be that many people's minds are made up. But if that's the thing that pushes them over the line to say, "I'm going to get vaccinated," that makes our schools safer for our students. That gets us one step closer to being able to go to get COVID transmission down, to find levels where our masks are maybe optional in the future, or just not having so many staff out, having to struggle for subs or increased quarantine as we continue to work with the Health Department to find ways to keep our students in school, along with their regulations and recommendations. This is a way that we can help get more people involved. So I wish that they would have been vaccinated in the first place. I wish that we could just be giving this to every staff member, because every staff member made the choice to keep our schools safer by getting vaccinated. But if they're willing to do it in the next few weeks, in the next two weeks, get that first shot and be down the path, then I'm willing to say thank you for that, because that's going to keep our next semester. So I'd rather have it retroactive if someone makes that decision. In that case, I can certainly see the logic in what you're... And so it won't change whether I vote for the overall policy, however it goes, but I will not be supporting this particular amendment. Dr. Johnson.
I will refrain my comments until the based on outcome of the amended voting. I'll just hold off my comments.
Other comments or discussion on the amendment? I've seen none. I will call the question, because this is, in some ways, a budgetary item, and for clarity tonight, we're going to do votes by roll call. So Maida, if you would please call. The vote is to amend the policy as shown as Commissioner Lyons.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine?
No.
Commissioner Zer?
No.
Commissioner Bika?
No.
Commissioner Clements?
No.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
The amendment fails. We now return to the original language as proposed in the packet. At this time, I would open it, I would probably hear a motion to approve the policy. Once we have a motion on the floor, we can then discuss. Or potentially, I mean, I guess if there was an additional amendment, we could also motion to amend. But I think you need a motion on the floor before we go to discussion next. Dr. Johnson has motioned to approve the policy, COVID-19 leave policy. Is there a second?
Second.
We've been seconded to approve the policy as submitted discussion on the motion. Dr. Johnson, you had already asked to have a floor after.
Yeah, I know it was reported before, but I could... Can I just, do we update numbers in terms of where we are, in terms of our percentages of staff that are vaccinated? And then I just have a follow-up question after that, but do we have a current percentage?
We do not have an updated percentage of staff that are vaccinated. I know that when we did the survey last spring... Superintendent Johnson, do you recall what the percentage was at that point in time?
I think it was really close to 85%.
And then my follow-up question, could... Do we know that the number and our percentages of staff who have sought sought out any exemptions, medical or religious, do we have any data on that as well?
At this point in time, I don't believe that they would reach out to our office for that. And at this point in time, we have not had anybody who's contacted us regarding that.
Other discussion on the motion?
Just another point of clarification. This particular policy would not have any impact on what was the terminology, sick leave banks or something? Was that a thing that... This is something completely separate, and so the possibility of the utilization amongst... Was it sick leave bank, or am I making that?
You're not making that up. We have a district-wide sick leave bank, catastrophic illness, where employees can donate their sick leave to a staff member who is experiencing a catastrophic illness, injury for themselves or a family member. This has nothing to do with that. They're two totally separate benefits, and they would not cross over.
Seeing no additional comments or questions, the motion on the floor is to approve COVID-19 paid leave days for qualifying staff. At this time, I will call the question, and Maida, if you could do that via roll call.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Zer?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Motion passes. At this time then, we'll move on to monitoring district results. The first item tonight is the full presentation of the R2 Academic Performance Monitoring Report. Superintendent Johnson.
Good evening. With respect to R2 for academic performance, considering the evidence that we've shared, I would judge the preceding information is accurate, complete, and the district is making reasonable progress, as exceptions noted. I'd like to thank, and I know the board had received close to 84 pages of data on this. There's an immense amount of work in this with our leadership team, more specifically, Michelle Radke, who's here and present tonight, Megan Zeig, another member of the Assessment Department, with the data. Now ultimately, after we complete tonight, there is no possible way to really go through all this data this evening, but in future agenda items for the results components, for example, on the 20th, we're planning on discussing in far more detail the reading and the writing parts of our assessments and growth and achievement and the demographic data. But I'd like to go through some things with the board tonight in why I judge it to be at that level. We have quite a bit of data from various assessments for the 2021 school year. And that data shared in the report, as you've heard Director of Assessment Radke speak before, this is considered lagging data. And although it was reported in the fall of 2021, many of the assessments reported were administered in the spring of 2021. It's very... To say the least, it was an extraordinary school year. During that school year that we experienced last year, we had almost 2,000 students attend virtually, full-time. Except for our first and second grades, our students in cohorts A and B attended school in person two days per week, as we didn't have the necessary space for proper social distancing, until we were able to shift in early April for our elementary, and then in late April and early May for our middle and high school respectively, too. You know, at times we'll talk about how do we stack up against the regional and statewide districts? And that's just what we do as administrators, as districts. But in noticing this, you know, we're one of the largest districts in Wisconsin. Almost all smaller districts regionally and statewide were able to attend school majority of the school year for four or five days a week. For the first time, our students and staff had navigated our quarantines, isolation periods, and it's a challenge very obvious that continues this school year. Despite the barriers, though, that when we look and we examine at the state and national assessment data, and we're able to do that via WISE Dash, it's compared with, when we compare it with the other 10 largest Wisconsin school districts, and we like to look at the 11 UW system school districts, our data shows no lower than a top-three ranking in forward exam data and at the very top on ACT data. There are pockets of promise in the data, and even through a pandemic, I think, I know our students and staff have shown an immense amount of resilience and grit under such difficult circumstances. We do know that our progress in the face of the challenges, and we've examined our lower standardized test performance in recent years. We're not shirking that responsibility. We're putting it out there. Student learning loss, as a result of the pandemic, is a reality. We're not pleased by it. We all agree it's not acceptable, and it's concerning, especially prior to the pandemic. I guess the main questions are, what are we doing about it? What are we doing about this, and what now? And during the spring and summer of 2021, I believe the district took many measures, new measures, not only to help students recover learning loss, but to surpass pre-pandemic levels. And part of it is including implementation of new curriculum materials in reading, pre-Ks, all social, emotional learning, and math. We do have executive directors here. I know we have directors on the line on WebEx if they would like to chime in when we have some opportunities after I'm done speaking. But additionally, we've continued our development of a guaranteed viable curriculum in all of our content levels, across all grade levels, through the development of essential learning outcomes. You'll hear ELO, the term ELO, and Common Assessments. It's critical and necessary work to collaborate that we needed to reestablish this in the district. After we gathered the raw data in June from these tests, and then throughout that planning in late June and early July of 2021, toward the end of that month, the entire system leaders group engaged in comprehensive data analysis of our systems, our academic and behavioral data at a data retreat at North High. And we did that for, you know, for two days. There were some of the system leaders who had left that second day. But what the principals had done, using that analysis, especially on that second day, they developed their school improvement plans aligned to the EMLSS, you've heard plenty about over the past few months, to increase our student outcomes. We're focusing on the systems. The individual plans were shared with district administration in August to share the successes, note the areas of concern and improvement, and solicit feedback on the action planning. We had every school come in with a leadership team of at least just the administrators. But we also had some staff members join, too, to share their planning, acknowledge where we're short, where we're really struggling, looking at demographic groups and discussing equity and discussing their action plans. That hasn't been done before. We haven't polled all our leaders like that before and gone in depth. And then, conversely, they've never shared that with the district administrative team. And I thought it was really a tremendous exercise. I think the people who presented, especially the staff members, the administrators did too, obviously, but it takes quite a bit for a teacher to sit up in front of the superintendent and the executive team and other members to be able to talk about that and where we maybe had fallen short, but what we're planning on doing in the future, what they've already begun. So during, you know, at the start of this school year, we've returned to and engaged in many critical staffing and professional development strategies to increase our student learning and achievement. Equity is incorporated into all school improvement planning and all of our staff, as we've discussed from our equity commitment, to participate in PD around equity this school year. Furthermore, we've got additional instructional coaches at our school supporting our staff to incorporate that learning in the classroom. This year, new this year, each school staff with that one interventionist and/or student support specialist to support our students with the greatest needs. That specific programming like Avid at the middle school level, interventions at the elementary, those student support positions at the high school, we're targeting underrepresented groups of students, and we need to analyze and monitor their achievement, you know, to replicate that success. As I spoke before, there are pockets of promise in this district, even in the midst of a pandemic. I could talk about the ELO program at Delon. I could talk about fourth grade forward exam data over at Lake Shore. I could talk about fifth grade over at Sam Davy, where they're getting gains over the past couple... In the midst of a pandemic, we're going two days a week, and we've got many other around the state that are going four or five. But once again, do we just do that in isolation, or do we replicate that success? So the challenges of the pandemic, you know, we need to be responsive to our staff who continue to support our students in quarantine and isolation. And as you know, if you look, listen to the media, continuing to provide substitute coverage for colleagues when needed, it's a thing, regionally, statewide, and nationwide. Our school-wide professional development structures in October and November are flexible to support the greatest need at each school. Recently, our reestablished district-wide grade level and department meetings were restructured at the end of September to make sure that we... and the opportunity for all our learners. So that's where I'd like to stop right now, and if you've got questions on R two, if I cannot answer them, I really appreciated the work from from our administrative team, and I'd like to open the floor for comments, concerns.
So comments and questions from Superintendent Johnson on R two. Commissioner Zer.
You said that you were doing new curriculum in what content areas did you say, reading, writing?
Over the past, and I'd like to get anybody from the back, we could take Executive Director Van Vliet or Executive Director Schmidt, because they'd be able to tell the exact grade levels and the timing of that.
I'm just wondering what specifically, what specifically the curriculum is or what grade levels it's specific to or what it what its purpose is, what you're what you're looking to do with it, what it hopefully going to address.
So specifically, this, we are implementing literacy footprints at the elementary level, and that supports our reading curriculum at the foundational level. In previous years, there are some newer curriculums that support our ELA at the secondary level as well as continuation for our math curriculum at the secondary levels.
So what specifically, when when you implement a new curriculum, because it's hard to look at the data, it's hard to look at those drops and feel like it's hard because you understand that it's COVID and that there's been a huge hit to our to our children and not just to our children and our students, but our staff and the ability, I mean, when people are hurting in their homes and their and their, I mean, it's just, it's hard to authentically like learn anything when we're in that type of mental state or teach or, you know, just we all have to have a lot of grace right now. And I I'm so proud of that we're here and those numbers, it's you have to kind of take them with a grain of salt, but yet at the same time, I I really want to understand the what you guys are seeing specifically in in those in what's happening in the classroom and translated in that data outside of COVID, right? And what are what are you doing to to try to change it in the future? And what specifically are you targeting? Like what specific things are the are the new curricular measures or the changes in what we're doing in the classroom with the guaranteed and viable curriculum? What specifically we're trying to address? Why are we changing things?
Before 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 I would get a response from from any of the executive directors, I acknowledge that, you know, prior to my arrival in 2020, this was a concern. So there's no shame or blame, especially due to the pandemic, but this was something that I know in speaking with each executive director, and actually came up in the interview process as well, in my discussions with Dr. Heartbeck in transition, this was a concern, and it still is a concern. And, you know, adopting a new curriculum isn't going to change things like that, as you well know. But I think one thing that I learned from discussing with executive directors as well as directors was collaboration. That piece had been missing in the past and then reestablished in talking with Executive Director Schmidt and Executive Director Van Vliet, as well as, you know, Executive Director Kim Kohler, principals, Director of Assessment, Michelle Radke and Teaching and Learning Director Becky Graff. That's one thing that was that was missing. And when you're not able to collaborate, you don't know what that target is. Those essential learning outcomes, well, if you don't know the target, you'll hit it every time. So if anybody wants, I just wanted to preface that, Commissioner Zer, before anyone else had had shared at the executive team table back there.
I will add a little bit more, and then Executive Director Schmidt or Becky Graff is also on WebEx as well, so feel free to add. As we look at updating our curriculums, that's a regular practice that we want to have in our district, be responsive to the ever-changing needs of our students, but also as we learn more about what best practice looks like in our classrooms, that's a really important process of having a guaranteed viable curriculum. I think one thing that we look at a lot is the materials that we purchase to support the standard, and as we look at writing, curriculum is an important piece. So literacy footprints is an example of a materials adoption that supports the curriculum work that we're providing in our district. Being able to be responsive to the needs and updating those materials is an important part of the process as well. One of the things that we also wanted to be responsive to is not knowing what may be ahead of us due to COVID. We wanted to have relevant materials for our students that would provide an online option if needed, depending on what this year would rank. So that was certainly one thing that we looked at as we are looking at purchasing new curriculums and moving forward is so that the ease of delivery could be done through a virtual means if needed. I'll turn it over to Jim if he has anything to add of those new school year.
Part of the adoption process as well, as Superintendent Johnson said, that collaboration piece, it's as he referred to that a curriculum itself just doesn't create magic, so it's actually bringing together lead staff from across the district to make sense of the materials, to develop assessments, because we know if you do not progress monitor how your students are doing and have a long gap before before you get some feedback on progress and whether or not what you're doing is making a difference, they have to try to put those things in place, and that collaboration really then defines your scope, your sequence, the assessments, and any sort of interventions you'd put in place to try to support students that are not meeting the expectations through what you deliver through the curriculum. So as Manny says, Manny said, the literacy footprints is actually just a component of the overall ELA program, you know, it's that shared reading piece. There are other components as well. The wordwork had been worked on about three years ago, so there's different components that they try to piece together, sort of the best practices within each area. And then the math curriculum, in particular, we targeted secondary and really making the middle school and high school have the same curriculum, the college preparatory mathematics. And part of the challenge there has been, that is a very, we know that students, whoever's talking about the math is learning the math. A big part of that curriculum is that conversation that takes place in the classroom. That was a big challenge last year with COVID, is still a bit of a challenge this year, as well as the coaching that comes with it. So there's been some hiccups in trying to roll that out with the pandemic, but we still are working through some of the wrinkles on that piece.
Or it's still yours, yes?
Question. So then you kind of, so taking the COVID situation out, even though it's really impossible to do now, but looking at what you what you were talking about with the with it existing before the pandemic, right, and how it really got exasperated in a big, big way, what, I guess, how how are you hoping or how are you hoping that this solved? How are you hoping that some of the new initiatives in the curriculum, I guess, part of what we're doing academically, how are you hoping that that is going to solve the problems pre-pandemic? Like what we're, because I'm assuming a lot of these decisions were made kind of pre-pandemic, right? I mean, some of them might be rather new. I'm kind of trying to understand, are you expecting these to solve that problem? Are you expecting the new curricular initiatives to kind of help with the now the big drop with COVID? Does that make sense?
Part of, we're actually in a very similar situation where two several years ago, because part of the collaboration had to be halted because of the inability to get substitutes in the classroom. We're seeing that happen again. So just like when we tried to retool and struggled to find different time buckets for professionals to come together to wrestle with some of those issues, are the same issues that are in front of us again. So and that's what I'm going to hand to you about moving forward.
I would say that to answer that question is having, obviously, a guaranteed viable curriculum is one piece to the puzzle, and having materials that support that curriculum is really important. But it's all of these other things that need to come together to really provide quality programming. So as Jim was talking about, the collaboration that is needed for our teachers to help understand the standards and then have a quality resource and material that they can use to deliver the information to students is important, but it's also having the right assessments at the right amount of time. It's the knowing and understanding how our students are learning and how we can best meet their needs. So this is not the only thing that is going to solve our challenges. It's just one piece of the puzzle that we need to take into consideration on how to provide quality programming for our students.
Representative Berg.
You mentioned equity training for teachers during professional development, and I was just wondering, what does that entail or what does that training look like?
I can start off where we did discuss this a little bit before, our system leaders had, you know, in the past, when there was some equity training, it wasn't necessarily required. But we made a commitment this past year for all of our system leaders to engage in this work, fifty of us. And then we had, I believe, about 110 of our volunteers, other staff members that wanted to follow us in the training as well, where then they could provide some leadership during this current school year. So we're taking the modules, and if others wanted to discuss a little bit in more detail the specific modules, but there are four modules that the staff will then learn on their PDIP days, and not just parts of staff, but all staff, so that we can learn together. And equity work can be very personal. And our staff members, our principals have shared this, I've been witness to it, where they've, you know, they work very closely with their staff and they discuss some pretty sensitive topics, and they're able to do so together in a safe environment, which is with their colleagues in small groups at the school. So that's what we're starting. We had started our first module this past month, and then we've got subsequent modules to follow, but it's what we had done as a group of leaders first, then 110 kind of first followers, and then this year, so that everybody gets that same type of training to benefit our kids. You?
So I'll say, Superintendent Johnson, that I appreciate your willingness on many of the indicators to say this needs improvement. And while we look at across the state or across UW system districts, the largest districts in the state or our regional districts, we can see that Eau Claire is actually, from that perspective, doing well, but to say, well, we're keeping up with our peers is not good enough. And I appreciate that many places where you said we have work to do here. We need to continue to move forward. We need to continue to address our English Language Arts, our mathematics scores. Just being among the top of the UW system districts isn't enough. We have to really reach all students in it. I'm glad also, as a former teacher, oftentimes when we think about how do we how do we get more results, a lot of times, at least in my career, I got basically told, teach harder. And I think, you know, Commissioner Zer, you referred to a little bit like how hard it has been for our staff over the last couple of years, and I think we all recognize that and feel that. And so I'm glad to hear that many of the things that you've suggested are not simply teach harder, adding in more collaboration and time for professionals to work together to share ideas, whether that's at the system leaders or principals level to come together and share across schools and then bring that back, or the many ways that content area teams or grade level teams are able to work together. And I think it's really, to my mind, seems promising for when we come back again and see this next November, to really be able to say, we're making now reasonable progress in several more of these areas. I don't anticipate that anything will be a silver bullet, and we will, I would love to see us have making reasonable progress all the way down the board, but we have to take our gains where we can get them. So I just wanted to express, I'm glad that you've looked at some things that are not simply teach more math, go harder on writing, but instead are looking for ways that hopefully have impacts when we work together as teachers and students. I appreciate that. Are there other comments or questions or discussion? And then, okay, Dr. Johnson.
Yeah, I guess for me, as I, as I treaded my way of, I don't know what I did through these ninety-one pages of R two, I would just, I would caution us, you know, results, the results, we can do, we can make a lot of, we can make a lot of inferences from them, but results are snapshots on predetermined time, whether it be fall, spring, orderly. And I just would caution, not only through a pandemic, but prior to that, this particular particular school district found itself a little bit over consumed with quote unquote results. And for me, I think there would be value in terms of taking a step back in the number of the number of results, but also taking a step back and allowing, allowing our teachers to see the value in how they've improved as educators, see the value in potentially these new approaches, what does it what does it do to our, due to the pedagogical approaches? And, you know, I think November is far away than it's not, though, and typically in educational world is that you just start taking the next steps to actually get to the data points that you need, instead of that allowance for not necessarily, not only like reflection, but really kind of, what are those other things that matter, that impact the overall learning experience for our students? And I am, I'm pretty sure that I would hope in some of these potential working groups that teachers and building leaders have, that we bring some of that other stuff besides these snapshots of data points. Because historically, if we look at snapshots of data points, and this is my concern overall about particular, we're not going to actually see a seismic shift. The data will not support actually seismic shifts in percentages moving forward. And, you know, I think, you know, a percentage point two or three, some on the school board may think that's a seismic shift. I'm not sure, but for me is what processes were involved in actually making those changes and focusing on those particular processes and practices mainly by mainly by our educators? I think it's really our educators are untapped resources to really make monumental shifts just in the process of learning. And that's where I would just caution us to allow moving a little bit to a more of a teacher, a teacher-guided results perspective, instead of kind of that hierarchical top-down approach that typically that typically happens. And, you know, who knows, maybe it may also have a positive impact, though, on morale, because we've all received the emails, morale's morale's bad for multiple reasons. But I think for me, that would just be my cautionary to, like.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't disagree with that, with what you had stated, Dr. Johnson. What I could share, I alluded to staff at Lake Shore, staff at Sam Davy. As a teacher before who had to teach on, what did we call it, the WKCE's way back when? I guess I'm dating myself, unfortunately. But it's the educational autopsy. Your kids take it, and then you don't find out the results. What is more powerful is that common formative work. When I have a teaching When I have a teaching partner in the, if I'm in the middle school, if it's in the other house where, boy, my kids really nailed that grammar and usage part. How about yours? Well, yours didn't? Okay, well, hey, here's how I taught this certain concept. Those types of conversations I know are occurring at those spots, and that is more fun to talk about, just those, the common formative language that our staff have when they're able to collaborate. But I know in speaking with their principals and speaking with executive directors and directors, that that's where you get those results, and that's then replicating that type of positive professional behavior, and that's what tends to help our students. So I wouldn't disagree with you. It is more fun to talk about those positive things, and I think that does go when people get recognized for that type of professional morale.
Good, sure. So I guess for me, and I'm unfamiliar with the particular work, but is there a way that, though, in terms of quantifying shared effective practices to potentially support these hard numbers of, because for me, we could actually, I would, as a board member, I would be satisfied if percentages did not change, but there was an increase in the sharing of best practices where our teachers provide feedback that this, I really feel good about this. And I also feel good that I have multiple colleagues that I can come together with. So for me, quantifiably, what does that particularly look like to go? Because I would be okay if the percentages hadn't changed, but our teachers are saying they see it on a daily basis that this particular approach is being impactful to their particular students. That matters as much for me as it relates to whatever these hard forms. And thank you, I hear your comments were spot on.
Commissioner Zer, I know you'd like, I just have a question for you, Dr. Johnson, as I, since as we accept this report in whatever form, either as Superintendent Johnson has submitted it, or if we make amendments to our assessment of it. One of the things I write for each one is a statement about, you know, sort of the board discussion about it. And what I guess I hear you saying is that you, one of the primary things is especially for next year, for this report, including either indicators and evidence about improving process and practice among the teaching staff, and specifically like from the teacher-led sort of level, does that accurately capture kind of what you've been saying?
It is.
Okay, thank you. I'll make sure I include that in the summary statement for the report. Commissioner Zer.
I think I was, I think you were much more articulate than what I was going to say. But at the same time, so when I swam through the 90 pages of data.
You were making more progress than Dr. Johnson. It was just.
It was slow, very slow swimming. But I think the thing that came to my, the first thing that came up was, was, I felt, I felt my heart hurt for our staff, because I think that this year and a half has been so incredibly difficult. And when you see numbers like that, right, and then the hard conversations come of like, hey, you know, this is what our kids look like on paper, and yet as a teacher, you've given everything that you have, you know, and you're really trying just to make sure that those kids know that they are loved and that they are supported in one of the most difficult times they will probably ever experience in their lives. And I think that we have to be so very, very careful when we see numbers like that, that to do that harder thing, right? To work harder, to feel guilt, to make it about doing more, and really, in this case, it would be doing more with less. You know, we would love to give our teachers a month off and just say, please, just go and come back and be rested and ready to go, you know? But we can't do that. And so, you know, I think that when we, when we have, we have to be really, really careful and really, really cognizant of what they consider a success, right? And I think that's what Dr. Johnson was getting to, is what do you consider success? What looks good to you? And what is moving the needle in your classroom, even if it doesn't show up on paper, right? And I think, how do we measure that? How do we find a piece of evidence to put in a monitoring report that will show, how do we quantify that? I don't know the answer to it, but I don't want, I don't want to ever feel like I'm getting stuck in the reform stronger, because that's not going to ever help or solve our morale problem, and it's certainly not going to help us climb out of the professional hole that I think a lot of our staff are in from the year and a half that they've had. So I just, I want us to find a creative way to show the amazing work that our teachers do that maybe doesn't show up right here, and that gives them a win, when we can go and celebrate an academic win when that, when it doesn't look like a win. You know, how do we find those moments and put a spotlight on those, I guess?
I think some of those could be shared on the 20th when we talk results. I mean, that's exactly what we're discussing now with just the systems that we're putting in place, but the collaboration that we've already had and experienced in the work of the ELOs last year. And I mean, that is, that's when I go out to schools and when I have to talk to principals, talk to stats. I mean, just in September, we had a couple of staff members walked in and said, that was really great professional learning that we did back in 123C. It was really something we haven't done in a while, but that's a credit to the staff who are leading and the staff who are participating in it. So that's the kind of stuff that excites, I think, all of us as leaders, and it'll come, that success will come.
Dr. Bika.
What a couple of you have been saying really gets me to think about the similarities and differences between the results, OEE, and student success, OEE, that we're about to talk about. And so I would say, if you're kind of keeping notes or whatever, the place where there's the most direct connection, it sounds like, is 4.7, which is what brings out practices, innovative practices. So really think about how those two can work together.
Seeing no other discussion at this moment, I guess I would ask for a motion to accept and approve the R2 monitoring report. There a second? Moving second, so a discussion on the motion to approve the monitoring report, this would be a time if the board had areas that they did not agree with superintendent's assessment, could make amendments to our own, the report, it is, or of course, we can agree with Superintendent Johnson's assessment and approve it as written. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will then call the question. All those in favor of approving and accept the R2 monitoring report, please say aye and opposed. Any abstentions? Monitoring report is approved. We'll now move on to the first draft of OE4 Student Success. Once again, Superintendent Johnson.
Thank you and good evening again. In scrolling down with this, and as Dr. Bika had mentioned, there are many similarities. And we'll start off with just the overall interpretation. Again, sometimes I'll highlight certain districts that we like to draw from Chipwood, Forest, Racine, Sun Prairie. Sharing my interpretation just overall for OE4, programs, rigorous programs, high levels of student achievement, reflected by the policies, especially R2. And they need to be based on state and national standards of learning. Quite a bit of collaboration with this one in discussing with Executive Director Schmidt, Van Leeuwen, and others, too. Again, they'll be available to discuss a bit. The definitions of challenging and relevant. And then scrolling down to OE4.1, as mentioned before, indicator one for desegregating and study that data to evaluate the following items, to ensure that equitable access achievement practice for our teaching and learning. Indicator one for that, presenting the indicators and evidence throughout R2. And then the subsequent results statements that we talk about, for example, for reading and writing on, where we can go into more detail on December 20th about those practices. And then if we were to scroll down in touch with 4.2, ensuring that instructional programs are based on comprehensive and objective review of best practices and research. Three things at play here, the analysis of our programs, our evaluation and cyclical view. We need to have people engaging in development and selection, you know, representing different schools, grades, interests, expertise, representation, attention to the voice of underrepresented populations, the definitions are stated there, for instructional programs, comprehensive objective review of best practice. So our review committees, and I did get some questions from the board, recently was able to provide a bit, some answers, and we could definitely discuss those tonight, and I will take that direction. And if we need further clarification, we have staff here to assist. Is that we will be comprised of staff, community members, family members, education partners, administrators, students. Quite often, that's isolated work, but we really need to have all voices and amplified to have that focus on equity with our materials, our curricula, reviewed by staff for alignment with best practice through an equitable lens. And number three, undergoing processes to include that review of research effectiveness data and alignment to standards and best practice. Moving on to 4.3, aligning the CNI to academic standards, the State nationally recognized model standards, and going through those indicators. The first one, and there was a couple of questions about unpacked, you know, what does that exactly mean? Love to have Executive Director Schmidt talk about that. I could, too. I shouldn't have done that because I based it on my prior experience in an old role. So I should really defer to, you know, I've got a definition of unpacked, and how I used to do it, but we really need it to discuss how Oakley Area School District does it. Or maybe what I need to do is put that definition there, examining those standards, and then determining the targets and the ICAN statements, what students should be able to know and learn and do at that point. For the rest of the indicators, you know, the standards for reading, writing, math, science, social studies, early learning, learned quite a bit through that process and learning about that. And then curriculum for subjects not listed above. So those six are key, if we could scroll down. For 4.4, measuring our students' progress toward achieving or exceeding those standards, OE4 is key to what we get with the results of R2. With the indicators there, with, you know, we're using the district and state assessments to track our progress and, you know, identify where for our curricular improvement. We've got screeners at the elementary and middle levels, and we've got the, you know, developing and maintaining our data systems to track and monitor our student progress. And then we've got the underrepresented groups of students as well. Number four or five, ensuring our program includes opportunities for kids to develop their talents and interest in more specialized areas. The indicators there, you know, we've got different programming existing in specialty areas to meet the needs of all. We've got different electives, exploratories at the secondary level, and then we've got R2 for specific demographic data as well. And then in 4.6, our program effectiveness to meet the needs of students of different backgrounds and abilities. The EMLSS is key right there to address all student needs. Students with disabilities, the tiered levels of service, or bilingual ELL, talented and gifted, and then alternative traditional classroom learning environments. There was a question on that. Could be Acres for Joy, it could be our dual immersion, it could be, you know, our Eau Claire Virtual School, McKinley Charter. But in looking at what others have with coherent governance as well, it was kind of interesting you go through those. 4.7, new and innovative programs, practices. Has some definitions there. I believe we could add a bit more to those after a couple of questions from our, from board members, going through the indicators. Portion program development, our processes for those, process to determine when certain programs are developed and implemented, when to retire others. What's probably most important, what I've learned in my communication and listening to others in the district, administrators as well as staff, is probably the retiring others. I mean, indicator three, you know, evaluation after a year one implementation, do they effectively meet intended outcomes for the program, especially on the underrepresented groups of students? 4.8, all our programs regularly evaluated, modified to determine effectiveness. And then in 1, 2, and 3, for the indicators, we, you know, we have our own, we would have our own review analysis process with the equity lens. We got to look at the results from the assessments with the trends as well, you know, what are we buying to support that? And then finally, for number three, you know, analyze that growth and achievement for the intervention models. And then nine, the environmental impacts of textbooks, instructional materials when making our selections, and just one indicator there. And that's what I have, about 10 to 15 minutes of discussion right there. I'd be more than happy to take questions or to shift them to others if I cannot answer them, or to take comments as well, because this is a draft, and I already received some questions and comments from the board. Thank you for that. Was able to share it with members of the executive team, and will continue to base that or to utilize that for developing the evidence and for better indicators and maybe even a different interpretation, too.
Thank you. Comments and questions for Superintendent Johnson?
Dr. Bika.
Small point, but I was the one who asked the question about multiple indicators, why we use the term including represented groups. What I, I think I didn't ask the question well, but I was just looking for, there was one indicator that used the word especially represented, where the others all said including. I was looking for a word that was at least, or especially was, even stronger on that condition. This damage is really, because the emphasis is there, and think that including really captured.
Commissioner Lyons.
You know, it's just going around in my head, your comment about retiring programs and that there's a process. And what I'm just wondering about is, is that something driven by student interest? Is it something that's driven by trends? Is it, and is that, and out with the old and in with the new? Are you always balancing? Talking about a process, but I'm wondering what's involved in that.
I think part of it is, and I've been guilty of this as a leader, as a principal, let's say, or as a director in different districts, where we don't analyze the programs that we have, and we just keep them going, and do we see the results? Not necessarily. Or for that matter, if our results are taking or visible, what are we going to do about it? That's, I mean, that's just one aspect from past experience, but just in speaking with others, too, if they have some ideas or. others to it, you know, if they have some ideas or history before I had, I had gotten here to it, it's just that when that came up, it was more of, you know, evaluating what we have, and if, before we take something on and put it on the plate, we take two, three things off, and that's just not, not just programming, but, I mean, talking about teacher morale, where, okay, it's another thing, it's another thing, I, you know, a wise person once said way back, what was, you put something, something on, probably take two to three things off, not just one for one, because it takes quite a bit of time to, let's say, implement a new curricula, to learn it, to then study it, and then there's a little bit of an implementation drop, but, you know, that's how I would answer that, if anybody in, if Executive Director Schmidt wanted to talk about that a little bit, we talked about this when we developed the indicators.
Sure, I can actually, a couple of broad examples, the district used to do a couple of tiers of programming, basic program and then enriched programs. We phased both out over, those were a couple that eventually retired, you know, the enriched, you saw happen much more recently with the EMLSS policy that came through in terms of trying to put a cluster grouping instead, because the data did not support that that model worked. Likewise, the basic programming was the same, we found that students were actually underperforming in that model, that happened several years ago, before probably any of you sat on this board, but those are a couple of examples of retiring practices and programs that the data just didn't support that were very effective. Another example, several years ago, we looked at an approach to integrating science at the grades nine and 10. It was, went from the model, which currently is a semester of our science and then a year of biology, and we ran a pilot for several years where we had integrated for two full credits over, over those two years. As time went on, we found that there was really no difference in outcomes, again, asking our staff to really balance a couple of different spinning plates at the same time, so we took it away, we retired it, we found that we went back to the way we'd been doing before because it just really wasn't providing the outcomes we were after, so we've seen this happen before where we've looked at the data and scaled programs back and removed them because it just didn't support stretching our staff that much more than thinly.
Seeing no additional comments or questions, we'll end this segment, I know my, my questions were, were sent in advance, and so I will look for some of the considerations in the final report, so thank you for attending to those as well. Our next item then tonight is a board development segment, we have sort of two presentations in one, the presentation of recommendations for the five-year capital projects and recommendations for our capital referendum. For the fall, we'll turn it to Abby Johnson and Kim Kohler, as well as some of the rest, Jeff Nestor and Margot Dahling.
Yes, so Margot is joining us from WebEx, but tonight we're here to present to the board on the facilities update, which includes the five-year capital plan and proposals for construction projects for 2223, as well as demo and trends information updated, and then finally, we'll circle back to some discussion on the potential referendum. So the first thing, so the first thing that I wanted to remind the board is that in 2122, we had discussed with the board increasing the amount of the budget for the capital improvement project on our each year, and so if you remember, we were spending 1.6 million, and the board approved to expand it to 1.8 million, so what we're presenting tonight will include 1.8 million dollars designed to look at preventative maintenance and facility improvement, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff, so I can give you a high-level overview.
Hey, everyone. I'm going to go through the 22, 23 priorities for capital improvement that I were looking to try to complete next year. Couple of things that you would note, you'll see a hand holding a leaf, those would be the symbol that we would use to identify projects that are, are green initiatives or support green initiatives and also support the district's climate goals. First of all, Longfellow control upgrades for $250,000. Longfellow has, needs an update to their HVAC system controls. Also, Northwoods, a children replacement due to its age, it needs its life cycle to be replaced for $200,000. You'll also notice that there is an asterisk by those two numbers, those two, those two projects, those two projects may qualify for SRR funds to be able to pay for those, that would be determined, we'd have to submit those and see if they would qualify. If they do not qualify, we would still go ahead with those projects, we would just remove one of the exterior projects that I'll show on the next slide. Next on the list was a Prairie Ridge fire alarm replacement for $78,000. We are unable to get parts for this, it's become difficult to maintain it, so I'd, we'd like to replace it. The Board Office right here, we'd like to replace one, the three units that we have on our roof for $240,000. This has been extremely difficult to maintain and to keep running, it no longer is supported by the train company, so we need to, to replace it. On the facility exterior side, we're looking to replace the parking lot at Flynn Elementary, it is, lived its life expectancy and its life cycle replacement. Also, there's some drainage issues we'd like to address. The long, we'd like to resurface the tennis courts for $65,000. Tennis courts in this climate, every about, every 10 to 15 years are going to need to be resurfaced. Memorial parking lot replacement, this is on the, coming off of Fairfax, this would be the item that we would remove from the exterior projects in order to be able to pay for the Longfellow and the Northwoods projects if we weren't, they weren't able to be used for SRR funds. We need to do this because we have a lot more, since we moved the main entrance for students and staff and everything to the Fairfax side, we've had an increase in not only vehicle traffic, foot traffic, drop off, we need to create a better traffic flow there, which would include putting a new entrance on the Fairfax side, coming off the street, maybe a one, so we could have a, one entrance, so we could have a easier flow. Also, we would like to make sure that we create a safe space for students to be able to walk to the grocery store and to places to get food over at lunchtime, I've noticed if you've ever been there during lunch, lunch hour, there are students walking right down the middle of the parking lot, we don't have any safe route for them to be able to get across to, to the grocery store. A couple of things, the next one over here would be the concession stand and the storage shed for $294,000 and $80,000. Currently, they do not have an outdoor concession stand or restrooms, and we were approached by All Rich Trust, I think they helped us two years ago with the track project over at Memorial, and they said they would be willing to help donate to put towards creating a restroom facility plus a concession stand in the existing building that they have out currently by the track, so they talked to us, but the district, they asked us if the district would be able, willing to put some, some funds into that also, and for $294,000, we'd be able to replace the roof, which we would have to normally replace anyhow, we'd also do some concrete work and add the water and sewer to that facility. Last part on my list would be an interior project, adding additional classroom to Prairie Ridge, so currently, they do, they do a little bit of small group presentations and instruction in their large meeting area, they would like to enclose and make a classroom out of there so they have a little more flexibility and a little more opportunity to have some different types of instruction there. In summary, for the 2223 capital improvement summary, budget, our normal budget of 1.8 million dollars would be done without SRR funds, as you can see there. If we're able to get SRR funds, which it appears that we do qualify for those two projects, look like it's going to, pretty sure that we're going to, we'd be able to do capital improvements of 2.2 million.
I'll turn it over to Kim.
And demographic trends and facility planning chair, Margot, Dahling and I will take the next portion of this presentation. The demo and trends committee is happy to be here tonight to give an update on our work over the last six months or so. We really have three sections to our part of the presentation. The first section would be an update regarding the recommendation we made for elementary schools, that recommendation was made about a year and a half ago, just under a year and a half ago. We also have a recommendation tonight, a new recommendation we'd like to present you regarding high schools this evening. And then finally, we'd like to take the opportunity for the board to provide any additional requests or direction to the committee at this time. So those are the three parts of the presentation, and Margot and I are going to kind of move back and forth between data and recommendations, so she and I will tag team this part. Margot.
Hello, everybody. Thinking back to July 2020, when we presented our recommendations for the elementary schools on the south side to alleviate some overcrowding, we had, as a committee, decided the best option would be to put additions onto Mann's, Meadowview, and Putnam Heights, providing at that time, we believed it was the best long-term solution. And then we've also presented two additional options in July of 2020, which were additions to Meadowview and Putnam Heights as an option two, and then just kind of third option of just adding on to Meadowview, and then kind of summarize the cost there as well. We did investigate building a new school, and that really was not an option that we had found at that time, so Kim, I'll turn it over to you for the next slide.
Thank you. Shortly after that recommendation, we commissioned the Applied Populations Lab from the University of Wisconsin-Madison to conduct a study of the Oakley School District, and because 2021, the 2021 school year was the most recent year of data within that study, and enrollment had shifted due to the pandemic, the committee, we were cautioned by APL that projections might vary from what actually happens, just because that, that most recent year becomes most important in the data set. So, you know, the, the data from APL might vary more than it has historically, but what you see here is the data that APL provided to us with actual enrollment in that first column for 2021, 22, and then projections for the five years after that. And in this slide, you can see that we have some relief in capacity at those schools that Margot just talked about, so she mentioned Mann's, Meadowview, and Putnam Heights being schools where the committee would recommend increasing capacity, and of those schools, you can see on this slide, Putnam Heights remains a school that we would be, the committee would be concerned about because it's in the orange, but both Meadowview and Mann's at this time are in yellow, so the committee would say that that's comfortable at this point in time, and so this year, the committee spent some time talking about that, and Margot would like to talk a little bit more about what the committee thought.
Sure, so based on the data from the trends and projections out, we decided that we should modify our recommendation to you and look at primarily recommending in addition to Meadowview and Putnam Heights, as Kim just spoke about, that Putnam Heights is still kind of in that tight area of capacity, and then Meadowview had found some relief, but by putting the additions on to Meadowview and Putnam Heights, we can address some of those immediate population concerns, and then address any additional concerns at the same time. And then kind of the biggest impact would be allowing us to relieve any, any constraints at Mann's and Robbins if needed with additions to those two schools. The estimated cost would be around 9.3 million, and we would add 310 seats. And then another recommendation, secondary recommendation to, you would be an addition to Putnam Heights as, as a standalone, and that would kind of provide some relief to Putnam Heights based on the capacity trends as Kim had discussed previously, and add about 150 seats in capacity to that school.
So that modification in the committee recommendation is the elementary portion of what we want to discuss tonight, we'd also this year like to present to you a recommendation for high schools. So on this slide here, again, you see the same thing, in the first column, you see current enrollments, 2122, where North is at 93.8% capacity, and then if you follow that across the years, it's projected really to stay in there, in that red area. All the way across on the right-hand side, you can see that North becomes yellow, as does Memorial, the caution with that is twofold, one, it's more than five years out from the APL, so APL would say at the five-year mark, that's less reliable, like that's about the time that you might want to think about commissioning another study, and then the second piece is the COVID, the impact of COVID data. So you can see on this slide that high schools would be something that we would be concerned about, and really to shift the enrollment from one school to another just shifts the problem from one school to another, there's really not space to absorb. And so with that, Margot is going to talk a little bit about what the committee decided or is recommending for high schools.
Sure, so kind of taking the same approach when we looked at elementary schools and using the data to kind of provide us some options and look at the best case scenario, the committee looked at option, these four options, with option C being what we thought would be the best fit based on those trends, and we would add 270 more spaces for enrollment, and then increase the capacity to 1,970 students, with the additional benefit of adding some small group learning areas, and then total cost estimated at 5.916 million. Important to note that on all of this, we also looked at capacity of the cafeteria and noted that North really needs some assistance there, additional capacity in the cafeteria, so we do need to add a separate additional cost of 1.9 million to be able to add on to the cafeteria, which does kind of take, it takes away from a couple classrooms in order to do that. So then moving on into the next slide, there's the potential layout for the addition to North High School, and just some things to highlight would be, again, those small group areas and the breakout areas that kind of allow for like a more 21st century approach to, to learning, where students can go and, and work on, you know, collaborative projects in the hallway and small group sessions in those breakout rooms, so just kind of a great option there for furthering our students' capacity for learning.
Thanks, Margot, and before I wrap up our portion of the presentation, I want to say thanks to Margot in particular for her leadership on the committee, and also thanks to the committee as a whole, we really dive into quite a bit of data and examine options and try to recommend to the board the best options for students. I'd like to talk a little bit about committee next steps. The committee has discussed next steps for the group in general, we meet again on Thursday. Currently, the committee has recommendations before the board for elementary expansion and high school expansion. When we look at the enrollment for middle school, they're currently very comfortable. All of our middle, all three middle schools are in that yellow area and projected to stay in the yellow area, so we don't anticipate a middle school recommendation coming forth anytime soon. So moving forward, the committee can provide support to the board for a referendum, we can share the data that we've looked at, as well as a rationale for any recommendations that we shared with the board. We could explore if the board would like space for all day We could explore if the board would like space for all-day 4K, but that's really pending legislative action. There's nothing right now that would indicate we'd have an immediate need for space with 4K programming. Because it just hasn't gone through legislation yet. Or if there's another direction um, that the board would like for the committee to provide, um, we could certainly do that as well. We're happy to answer any questions at the end of the presentation, but first I believe I'm passing it back over to Abby and Jeff.
Thanks, Kim and Margot. Um, so my, gonna wrap up the presentation talking about deferred maintenance and referendum. So we have a list of the deferred maintenance um, that we are currently aware of. And so that totals just over six million dollars. Um, we talked at budget development last week. How is that number so low? So two things really. Um, you remember in the twenty sixteen referendum, we did approximately twenty-five million dollars worth of deferred maintenance to kind of get us caught up. And so this list grows every year. Um, and so that's why it's smaller right now. The second reason why this is a smaller list is because it doesn't include um, any things that we've talked about previously. So like the recommendations that Demo and Trends just presented um, to the board in addition to things that we had talked about before as part of the capital referendum. Again, we have the um, items noted that would qualify for our green initiatives. Moving forward to help meet that goal of the board. And so again, there are some additional HVAC things that could be done and potentially could be funded with S R three funds. We have some ADA compliance that we weren't able to finish with the twenty sixteen referendum. Some doors, some roofing, heck pointing, flooring and fire alarm systems. Many of these items come up year after year. And so they kind of get put on a list because again, with that one point eight million dollar budget, we have to prioritize and pick what we're gonna do that year. So again, the considerations for capital referendum that are not included in the deferred maintenance number I just shared would be talking about South Middle School and Roosevelt Elementary. There are some potential needs for the high school media centers to make them more twenty-first century. We have purchased some um, items for Fab Labs and we would like to house them in the media centers. And so there's some work that needs to be done there. Obviously, the demo and trend recommendations as well as any other deferred maintenance that we would like to talk about. The other thing that isn't included that's ongoing is the results of a facility study. So we approved that a couple of months ago and that's in process. We anticipate getting the first round of the report from the architects in early December. And there's a few things that they have to follow up with um, some schools and they feel that that will be ready probably about the end of December. So we'll be able to share those results with the board very soon as well. We didn't include costs for all of these things because our costs are very dated. So when we last provided a cost for South and for Roosevelt, that was five to six years ago. The costs today look very different and I'm trying to be conservative and I don't want to start putting numbers out there because plans could change, designs could change. And we just know that the overall supplies are very different in cost today than they were in twenty sixteen. And so so that was intentional that we didn't put dollars there because we know those figures are very dated. So with that, if the board has any questions on any of this, um, we'll be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you very much, Kim and Margot, Jeff and Abby for the presentation. Mr. Clements, you are first up.
So both of the high schools show constraints in terms of expected capacity. Uh, and both our high schools are relatively large in the, in the Wisconsin context. At, at what point would we consider, you know, we're, we're adding on to Memorial High School, which is a Frankenstein thing. That maybe has been added on to a number of times. At what point do we say we need to build a third high school and start kind of spreading out capacity? Because I appreciate the economies of scale, specialization of classes and things like that. We can offer at a larger high school. But I think with, with both of the schools, we're, I think we should be asking that question. Especially given the uh, recent population growth in our region and at least how that is anticipated to continue for the, for at least the near term. Is that something that has been contemplated?
The committee didn't spend um, time talking about a third high school. I, you know, I think it was mentioned, if I remember correctly, in a meeting. Um, but um, when we looked at um, potential solutions for this one, really it was, if you look at the, um, I guess before the blue column, Memorial is slightly bigger. So the idea was, um, can we bring North up to the same size? But other than that, we hadn't had a discussion about a third high school. We, the committee is looking for direction. Um, so if that's a, something you want us to do, it's certainly something the committee could do.
The bottom question, do we have um, have we incorporated projections from the city in terms of what they are seeing in terms of approved housing elements that are in the next three to five years in terms of how that may affect our student enrollment projections?
So APL um, takes into account um, and I don't want to misspeak for A, APL, but they do take into account the growth in the area within um, their projections. So Margot, jump in. Um, if I misspeak, baseline projection, three-year, three-year something projection and a five-year something projection, three-year trend, five-year trend. And then um, provide um, kind of a rationale for that. However, um, I will say, one of the reasons that um, Meadowview remained on, even though it looked like it was going to be in an okay place, is um, the committee does have concern with growth along that ninety-three corridor.
Correct. The, the trends that we reviewed were consistent with our recommendations for capacity on the high school and elementary school. It didn't indicate explosive growth and like Kim said, it was APL does consider um, what's going on in the community as part of their projections.
Representative Burg and then Commissioner Lyons.
Um, I was wondering what the hopeful start date was for the project of Memorial in the parking lot?
For the parking lot? Um, we would look to um, get it bid out um, this um, probably January?
We would hope to have it bid out and have a, a contract signed and everything. If at the end of January, first part of February, we would begin construction the moment that school got out. There is enough room in there that we'd be able to redirect traffic for summer school and at sports and other, other types of things. But uh, the faster we get that down, the better. The easier it will be when we transition back in, into school to be able to start up on time.
I think one thing to add that is a little bit different with that project is the contingency of the um, HVAC projects being approved by the S R funding. So that grant hasn't opened for us to be able to apply for it yet. We know we're getting it and we're kind of Superintendent Johnson's nodding his head, there's some things that we have to do and submit to DPI. So um, that would be put into our document when we put it out to bid, that, that project would be contingent upon that S R funding, but we should know that, I would think, early February, I would guess. Because as soon as it opens, we will be submitting it um, for their approval.
Is there, we can begin a project like that, especially a parking lot? Because there's, it's contingent, especially that is contingent upon several different factors such as the weather, availability of, of certain projects and whatever else we come across while we're, while we're digging up the parking lot. So we want to do with the least amount of interruption to the, to the educational process.
I had a follow-up question. Um, I was wondering why we were prioritizing the um, Memorial parking lot situation, especially when North is under more tense capacity. Memorial parking lots also open two ways onto a major road, Clermont there. And we just had um, some pretty significant construction on the road right in front. Um, so I was just wondering why um, we were prioritizing Memorial over like a, a, a change to a North parking lot, especially since North.
Instead of a North parking lot?
Yeah.
We don't have an opportunity at North to expand that parking lot. And we've already actually gone through and did a, a safe routes to school study there. So we changed that parking lot so that with the ability for students to be able to walk to, to school safely and cross that parking lot has already been completed. I know that the traffic there, just due to the amount, the size of the population that is growing there, that sooner or later, we're gonna have to make some type of an adjustment there. I don't know what that specifically is going to be. This, we have an opportunity to be able to uh, alleviate a safety concern that's, that is come full circle because when we moved the, the main entrance to the Fairfax side, it is increased the traffic. I'm sure you notice as you're there. So and there is no place for students to be able to walk or cross to go to, go to the grocery store or the, or the places across the street safely. So we have an opportunity here to be able to uh, create kind of the same kind of thing that we did over at North. And give them a safe route and to limit the amount of traffic that can be in there. And also to create, to beautify the parking lot, right? Also to give us an opportunity, also to, to uh, we'll work with our green initiatives, give us a little more green space and plant some trees.
Thank you.
Welcome. Commissioner Lyons.
So nice work on, on all of this, the demo trends and, and the referendum. All those two things come together uh, is one of the committee next steps. And demo trends acting as that referendum resource, I think, would really be invaluable. Because some of the questions that I have from the presentation, I know will be of interest to the community. And I, I think that um, I think it, I remember when I was a part of Demo Trends and we were always very hungry for predictive data. And where are these numbers going? And I think it was really unfortunate that the pandemic and you engaging with Madison occurred at kind of the same time, because I have questions about the, the, the predictive data that they're, that they're putting forward. I'd like to see um, some, some recreation or some retesting of that data to make sure that that's um, reliable. And I'm, I'm looking at that high school enrollment capacity. And I see that we're at thirty-one hundred, we get up to almost thirty-three hundred. And then the APL data in twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven has us even dipping under three thousand to twenty-eight hundred. And so that idea that we have um, a, a capacity problem in the high school could be a, a moment in time. Unless there is that predictive data. And I know from being on the, on the committee, we were very concerned about what kind of subdivisions and neighborhoods were going to be established in areas that are open to housing developments. And that was always the South in ninety-four issue. And the north part of the city with the river and the airport gets landlocked a little bit. And so are these numbers right? Is North the right place to be expanding? And to get feedback from Demo and Trends uh, to help really inform the referendum and, and be that, that kind of citizen feedback area that really gives us some rich ability to be able to tell the story.
Doctor Johnson.
Yes. Yes. I, I guess I'll continue to uh, make this point, but what, what I would like, if, 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 if at all possible, uh, is uh, as we reimagine spaces, I, I, I would really uh, uh, ask Demo Trends to, to look at uh, reimagining uh, uh, outdoor learning spaces. Expanding kind of uh, uh, where Wi-Fi is accessible, even if it means that uh, uh, an elementary teacher can actually take a class out to a green space and still be able to utilize iPads. It's not designated learning space, but an outdoor learning space. And then uh, you know, as, as indoor air quality continues, I'm not sure it will ever decrease, especially after this particular pandemic emphasis. Do we know or has a question, what's the, the utilization or uh, how many of our buildings have uh, uh, windows that can be opened that don't necessarily uh, uh, you know, violate like safety standards in terms of uh, uh, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't access, like you know, intruder access and all those types of, I don't know if that's a thing, or do we, do we, do we kind of have information? Because I guess for me, when you read moving forward about uh, indoor air quality and given the aging of buildings and the inability potentially update HVAC systems enough, one of the uh, mitigating opportunities that we have is the utilization of uh, 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 clean natural air uh, uh, coming in. So I'm, I'm, I'm just curious, do we, do we have that? And if, if so, I would just like to get a report, see some information on that aspect as well.
Yes, I don't have any solid, say, like a report or a spreadsheet of that information. I can just go off of what I've done. I know that when we had a referendum, we had an opportunity to replace a lot of windows that you, you were talking of safety concerns, maybe large windows, we'd open them up. Uh, now we have ones that have small, you can get out of them if you absolutely had to. Can't really get into them. So they, they don't violate any, any safety things in my mind. The majority of our buildings have the ability to have the windows open. Some of those have the sensibility to be able to open them up. I think to your point, that is a very valid, a very valid and important thing that we'll be able to bring in fresh air. So improving our, and updating our controls allows us the opportunity to be able to bring more fresh air and filter that air as it comes into the build. Does that make sense? So we can, instead of sometimes in the winter or even in the summer, you're only bringing in, say, ten percent fresh air. Well, ASRA has a, 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 a minimum requirement now of thirty percent. So we like to go above and beyond that whenever we have the opportunity, not only to be able to bring in fresh air, which is probably one of the most important and one of the best mitigating things to be able to do to fight not only COVID, but the flu and every other type of thing. But it also allows us, say, in certain times of year to lower our cooling costs and lower our heating costs. So but to your point, I think taking a look at some of the other windows that we have around the district and I'll definitely, definitely go through and take a look at that to make sure that we have the opportunity to be able to open them. But I would say the majority of ours have the ability to do that without violating any type of safety, safety stuff. Does that help answer the question?
Good, good, good.
Thank you.
Commissioner Zer, and then back to Commissioner Clements.
I have a question about the green initiative. Um, uh, there we go. Um, specifically, oh, maybe it was parking lot replacement or so I'm wondering specifically what, what, what qualifies? What are the things that you guys are looking at with like, I'm, like a parking lot, for example? How is that meeting our, our climate um, commitment? Like, what specifically were you doing?
I would say, I'll, I'll answer two parts here and I'll let her answer. But one thing would be that we try to use and recycle the, the guitar that we use. We don't just call it offsite. We, you know, we don't buy new stuff. We bring it in, we try to reuse it as much as possible as fill. That would be one portion of our green initiative to, to recycle and reuse stuff. Secondly, there's a big deal with water runoff that we have. So water runoff is a, is a big issue. Um, polluted water runoff. So having the opportunity to create green spaces with trees and and those kind of things that help mitigate some of our water runoff. And not only do we want to do that, but it's also in twenty twelve, the D N R passed a law that if you touch so many acres of, of land that you have to reexamine how much water runoff is going into our storm sewers. Which, and it also in my mind, and I guess in what the design would be, working with principals and everyone else, that we would want to make, create green spaces where people have the opportunity to be able to go outside and work in the classroom. In, in some cases, to go outside and, and, and there and also to be by our, our, our parking lots.
From a behavior standpoint, one of the things um, that we do with parking lots is we always partner with our Safe Routes to School partners to talk about how can, how can we use the parking lot to influence the behavior of our students and staff? For example, if we have um, you know, at um, North High School in the parking lot, we have a walkway. have a walkway that allows kids to safely get from one end to the other. But we also have fully efficient vehicle parking. We also have carpool parking and lanes and things like that. So we try to influence, uh, human behavior with the design.
So, just to follow up with that, um, I'm glad to hear, I'm glad to hear water management as part of the consideration for the parking lots. Um, I know that there has been initiatives on UW's campus and around town and around, in our state and our region to, you know, implement more, um, like bio remediation areas where, you know, there's plants that are specifically in low lying areas, rain gardens, those types of things. Um, and I think we have an opportunity to, you know, use, when we do something like this in a large space like that, to educate our young people, um, you know, about, about, um, you know, engineering practices that, that are going to be important as we face the ramifications of climate change. And so, you know, at, at any, at any point in those, in those, when we're, when we're doing projects like that, whether that's permeable surfaces or semi-permeable surfaces, you know, when we can look at how, how can we, um, be a leader and how can we, uh, incorporate, uh, education into, into these projects, I, I would, I would be a strong advocate for that.
Commissioner Clemens.
Thank you. Um, this is a perfect segue, I think, from Commissioner Zer's question, but the architectural study that you, you'd mentioned earlier, um, trying to connect that to our, our climate, um, our expectation and potentially the referendum. Can you just share briefly, because I know, uh, perhaps all these details are, are provided elsewhere, but can you briefly share like how these things are, are interconnected?
Yes, I could probably touch base on that. So, you're right, I tried to pass them with several things. Like if we're gonna put an addition on to any one of the schools or, or do roughs or, or do those kind of things, we would definitely want to look at a couple of different things. Obviously, solar would be prob, would be one of the things that we'd wanna, wanna take a hard look at and have them incorporate that into any type of study that they have. Also, second point, we're, we're looking at the feasibility of having electric cars and parking spots, you know, such that we can, we're all, all talk to them about incorporating that. Was, I'm sorry, what was the other part of your question?
Um, just, I know that the, an architectural study won't touch on everything that may be intended by our, our, um, climate, um, operational expectation, but, um, it's an opportunity where you get these expertise in to examine our existing facilities and look for, for these opportunities. Um, and so I was just curious to, about the scope of that project and how, and what the architects are being asked to do and how that may relate to identifying opportunities that, that are kind of win, win-win in terms of things that, yeah, you, these are things we may need or want to do in O'Bucks, right? Uh, there's a, this big environmental, like, climate performance opportunity to be realized here.
When, when we were talking about, we're doing the initial stages of all the discussion, and even when we went around, we went around to every single post, that was a topic of discussion that we had with them on anything that they were doing that were looking for opportunities to have a green initiative here in our district that we want to present and move forward with as much as possible. So hopefully, they have some, that's included in some of their studies. Uh, anytime that we're doing an addition, that is definitely gonna be on the forefront of, like, say, we do that addition at North High School. We're gonna probably, there would be an added expense to put solar panels on there, but we should recoup that cost eventually. Um, also, anytime that we, when Commissioner Zer said, anytime we have an opportunity to do a parking lot or anything like that, we wanna, we wanna make sure that, that they incorporate that also into their, their study about our green initiatives.
I think the other piece, how it ties to the referendum, is they're kind of looking at what do we need in the next five years and then helping beyond for the next five years after that. So that way then we can put ourselves in a good place and kind of time out those big projects so that we then, a, their priority now, they should be included now, or it's something just to be aware of going down the road. And then, like Jeff said, you know, communicating what the policy is and when we're looking at, we're looking at that with all of the projects that we're doing, the HVAC things. I know we talked about it, budget development last week. How does that also meet our green initiatives and all of those things that are being discussed and considered before we move forward with the project to help meet that target, um, the twenty-fifth?
Hopefully, hopefully their expertise will lend us to some things we haven't been talking about. That's what I'm hoping for. You know, I can think about adding trees and solar panels, but they may have a different view or something else that was done in a different district that we may be able to incorporate in our home.
Thank you.
Representative Logan.
Uh, two questions. First one about the APL predictions. Uh, for the north enrollment, they predict brought by probably two hundred students over the next five years. To me, that seems fairly surprising considering, in general, Eau Claire will continue to expand. So can you touch on the credibility of these APL studies and how their predictions have varied from the actual enrollment?
Um, historically, um, they have been most accurate in the first three years. And then, um, I would say by year five or six, we've run much above what they've predicted consistently. Um, so it wouldn't surprise me. We'll continue to monitor, um, what happens in, we're in year one of their study right now. Um, we'll see what happens next year in comparison to their study. Um, the further away from the study we get, the less predictive, um, they become. Um, and I think with that pandemic year, um, it, it was just really tricky. Um, it played some tricks on the data, I think, because the most recent year is most heavily weighted. So, um, we'll continue to monitor. I don't know if that's the trend that we'll see. Um, we're also looking at the meeting on, um, on Thursday. We have some other software that helps us predict overall by grade level, but we can't break it down by school. So we're gonna take a peek at what that might do for us as well.
My second question is, to me, it seems very helpful to see how enrollment has changed over time in addition to predictions. So for future reports, would it be possible to see past enrollment data in addition to the projections?
Hmm, absolutely.
Thank you.
So to close this out here, I will just echo a couple of things that, like I said, one was, uh, Commissioner Lyons, I would love for Demo and Trends to be a resource for the upcoming referendum. Work is invaluable in the first place, and that is the current, will be the focus through probably the next year in terms of our facilities and the capital needs that we have there. And then just sort of piggyback on what Commissioner Clemens said, I would really like to see every time that we get a capital number like, uh, prediction, let's say. I don't know why the word is escaping me, it is after nine o'clock. Um, but every time that you come to us and say, this is what it will cost to add on to this building, I, I want to see that with aggressive, you know, push towards our climate commitment. We can always scale that back, but we know that one point eight million dollars does not even keep up with the maintenance of our current buildings, much less move us forward towards our climate commitment in any way. So really, the, the main opportunity that we have to have an impact with our climate commitment, at least in terms of our buildings, is within a referendum. So if we're going to do this, we need to act and, and really put those in. So I want to see it with the solar included as the first line, and we, if we have to dial it back because we find that the community can't support, you know, uh, and, and so just as we go forward, I, I want us to really think big on, um, the climate commitment side of it, because the referendum is really the only mechanism that we have to make the actual dent on some of those things. So I just want to encourage that to be the first line, and then, you know, if we have to dial it back to see what it would take to just get the building in place or to, that's fine, but that I hope is the, the first line. So thank you for the presentation tonight, for the extra information. Of course, we're gonna be talking about this a lot as we go forward. Thank you all. At this time, we'll move to our board debrief. Commissioner Lyons, you are our debrief leader.
Yes, I am the, the debrefer for the night. Um, so I'll start. Um, I, I thank the board for, for hearing me out. I had an opinion. Um, I also voted for the, uh, the COVID leave because at, at its core, um, that, um, lack of a choice in, in having to be quarantined and having to stay home was, was a primary concern to me. Um, so I, 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 I think that went well. I, um, will reiterate that, uh, I learned from all of you and, uh, I think that went well. Um, one of the things that I think, um, I, I, I would like more of is, in, in one of the opening phone calls, um, they were talking about quarantine numbers. And I actually will admit that I'm, I, I don't have my arms around those numbers. And I, I went to the dashboard and I, I noticed that, that, that they're not updated. So I, I guess I would like, as a board member, some just preoccurring information on, on where our quarantine numbers are, because I, I, I feel out of touch. Um, I will then turn it over to, uh, Commissioner Zer.
Um, well, okay, so thing I struggled with, I, um, two things really. Uh, it, I, I struggled with the COVID new policy decision, and I ended, I think it's because I've gotten used to, to not having to make decisions about those types of nitty gritty detail things. And I, I was really, I really struggled with having to like go into the weeds on something like that. Um, not like struggled with it like at all, but it just, I didn't really want to talk about it. Um, but I'm really happy that we did it. I'm happy that it got done, and I'm happy that we had such a strong recommendation from, um, the administration. Uh, but it, it just felt, uh, I, I think I've been appreciating coherent governance for, um, letting a lot of the operational bits be, um, be, uh, uh, the purview of the people who really oversee those day to day. Um, but, um, the second thing is I'm, I am, I'm having a, I'm having a tricky, I'm having a tricky part with monitoring. And it's not, it's not, it's, it's so much. Those, the policies are so big and there's so much meat there that I kind of feel like I, I gloss, or like I can't unpack it. Like when it's, when, if it was just one part of that policy or a, a small hunk of it or something, I feel like I could maybe actually gain some footing. And I feel like, but, um, there's so much there. And there's so much in each one of those policies that it feels at times like I, I, I don't know what to ask for. Like I'm just kind of swimming in it and I don't quite know where, where to go because there's so much there. If they were, if they were simpler or shorter, we were monitoring smaller hunks of them at a time, or some, or I don't even know what it is. But that is an observation, um, that I'm, that I'm coming to is that it's, it's really tricky. And maybe it's time, maybe it will take time for us to really understand what we're looking at when we see these, these policies come up for monitoring. But there's, there's just so much there, um, that I do feel a little adrift sometimes in it, in my monitoring.
We'll move counterclockwise and come over to you, Representative Logan.
Actually, I'm gonna interrupt you there. So we did talk about, uh, with the representatives that we're gonna hold off on including their feedback until we've gone through our orientation process, which is, has been one of the growth things. So I apologize once again, but we do have our first orientation meeting for the representatives the week after Thanksgiving, I believe. And so then we'll include them at that point. So I'm, I'm sorry for not having remembered to let you in, on that before, and thank you.
Not, not a problem. Commissioner Bika.
Well, tonight for me felt like, I feel like personally I am now like in the routine first time of the new, of this new agenda. It really felt like that for me tonight. I find I'm becoming increasingly interested in how the change on what we're doing in the board, how that's translating out into what the community understands. And I, I, that is becoming very curious about the communication plan. I think that we are hearing some, we are getting some contacts with people, believe, and what, uh, they present is, at times not accurate. And I empathize, uh, that I understand it, we may be getting more difficult to, to follow. And I think some of the, some of the, um, misinformation or inaccuracies when people contact us, I think probably gets resolved anyway with changes to the way that we communicate. And boy, I was really struck by, you know, what you said, um, and thinking about, think that the, one of the biggest changes now that I'm really coming to realize is how many hours of preparation now go into every individual board meeting. And what that means, the kind of workload that we now have. And I think it's necessary, I think we're gonna do better than ever before, really thinking about with the elections coming up and trying to give people an accurate, an idea of the amount of preparation that goes into this work. It's quite different than ever before. It feels that way to me.
Commissioner Clemens.
Thank you. Um, my first comment was, is very similar to Commissioner Bika's. When I opened the monitoring report this week, uh, on what we did, and I said, oh boy, I'm gonna, gonna take a little more time on this than perhaps I even anticipated. So, um, I, I think that it's, that it's good that we are getting data in this format. Um, and I guess I'm becoming more accustomed to seeing, seeing the page number and, and gravity of, of the material that's there. Um, and, and giving myself some, some time to, um, try to digest it. So there, there, I guess there's other comments about how the data could be presented, but that's not what this, this part of our, um, question is for. But, um, I think uh, we are starting to see how this governance model is shaping up, you know, having something removed from the, uh, agenda or consent agenda so it can be discussed. Um, getting to kind of a, the need of a particular issue that we do maintain that direct purview over. And I think that the dialogue was, was, was good. I think some of the, some of our questions regarding Demo and Trends was, was perhaps getting into the weeds a little bit, but I think it's in part because it is part of our core, our functions, and there's just a lot of, a lot of questions that relate to, to our facilities. So I, perhaps went a little longer than, than some of our recent meetings, but I thought all, all in all, it was really good discussion and pleased with how it went. Mr. Norden.
Uh, so I will also jump on what Dr. Bika said and say that this was the meeting where I really felt like was the first, I mean, just having the R2, the first of our results policies is the, is the meaning of what we're supposed to be doing here, is making sure that the district is providing for our children the things that our community wants them to provide for our children and achieving results for our students. And that's obviously on a personal level, as we all have students in the district, but also on a representative level for the community of Eau Claire. So I, I, you know, we continue to have meaningful discussion at this time, and that comes from the amount of prep work that we're doing ahead of time so that we can use this time when we can actually speak to one another about the issues, since we're constrained in that outside of, of this public meeting. So I'm, I'm glad to get here. And the thing that I think we can continue to work on, what Dr. Johnson brought us in, is, is looking at how do we continue to refine that? How do we continue to understand what do we need and what do we mean when we talk about these results? A lot of, we, we set our results out, but we need more discussion about what does that mean and what? We have this, we have our R2 in the books, as it were, for this year, but we've recognized some things that maybe we want to see in addition to that and, and how we might measure that going forward. And I think that's part of the evolution. And I don't know that it's a, a weak point, but it is something to continue to work on. I will, um, mention to you, Commissioner Zer, that part of that evolution is, uh, our second meeting right now, for December, we have a smaller portion of the results that we're gonna be digging into. I, I, I agree that it, I look at every result I agree that it, look at every result academic for the district is overwhelming this first time. And that's why I think we're going now to try to spread that out, to have a smaller bit. Say, you know, this is where we are on this subject area going forward to help that. And I think that's an evolution that we need as a board to, one, keep focused on the results throughout the year, but two, be able to actually get into it and understand it without that portion. So that communication and the discussion is a strong point tonight. And I'm going to take this time, either the debrief to just remind my colleagues on the board that Patty Iverson had sent out a doodle poll for two work sessions. That was maybe, it was a couple of weeks ago, I think now. I will try to find it and maybe resend you the link to those doodle polls, but our January and February work sessions on policy writing and board self-evaluation, if you want to have your dates counted in the poll to see which one is going to work best for most people, please do that as soon as possible so we can set that date. That was sort of an announcement within the reflection, but thank you for your forbearance, all of you.
And Commissioner Johnson.
You know, one of the things that I appreciated and I would like to see, just moving forward, the memo of the collected that question and responses of OE four. What I would like, potentially like to see is that could be, those, that memo or the responses, those, what, continued like a live document and built up. And so were there further things that you needed to follow up on, as you indicated in some of the responses? Share that back with the group towards when OE four is back up. And, you know, I guess for me, I guess my cautionary tale, as I listen to my colleagues discuss about the being overwhelmed by whether it be the page number about the, remember you can, you know, we all choose to actually, we get to stop at page one and or go all the way through to, to ninety-four, ninety-one. And so, because and I say that because I'm not sure all boards and all board members will be as responsive and or potentially would matter to them as much. And so, yeah, we are, we are, we are moving. We'll figure out the direction at some point, I don't know, later date. But we're moving, as long as we're moving and not standing still, I think that's a positive. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. Thank you, everyone. At this time, I would hear a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, we adjourn.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board.